Thanks.
Okay.
Are we ready, Molly? All right. I'll call it a order. Reynoldsburg City Council Meeting of July 11th, 2022. It is, let me make sure I get this right, 6:35. I'm Council Pro Tem Stacy Baker, welcome. For those who are in the room and those who are watching online. We will do the invocation first and then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation will be done by Council Member Cotner.
Before I say, offer a prayer, I'd like to just ask everyone to take a moment of your own, to say your own prayer, your own blessing, whatever that may look like to each person individually. And then I will say something, a prayer from there. Oh God, I thank you for the opportunity to serve our community. I thank you for bringing our community of different beliefs and faiths and cultures together. I ask that you continue to help us blend and serve this community and grow into all that we have the potential to be. Heavenly Father, I just ask that we all find a way of serving in our world and helping in so many difficult days and times. And I'm just thankful for the opportunity to be a blessing where I can and to who I may. And I ask that somehow each of us can continue to serve and do the best that we can for our community. Thank you. Amen.
Let the allegiance stick to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Molly, can you please call the roll?
Council Member Cotner?
Here.
Council Member Bryant?
Here.
Council Member Strickland?
Present.
Council Member Savadi?
Here.
Council Member Peckerel?
Here.
Council Member Lawson Rowe?
Here.
And President Pro Tem Baker?
Here. Okay. Next item on the agenda, approval of the agenda, actually. Are there any changes, deletions to the agenda? Okay, saying none, the agenda is approved. Approval of minutes, is there any changes, deletions to the minutes? Okay, saying none, minutes are approved.
Council Member Baker, there's two sets of minutes.
Oh, yeah, okay, that's it. Sorry, let's redo that. For June 27th, 2022, the minutes for June 27th, 2022, is there any deletions, corrections, or additions to those minutes? Okay, those stand approved. And for the approval of minutes for our regular council meeting on June 13th, 2022, are there any addition, deletions, or corrections? Okay, saying none, those stand approved as well. Now, we're at the community comments portion. The community comments are a portion of the meeting is an opportunity for citizens to address council. May wish to bring any matters to the attention of council or discuss matters that are on the agenda. Before addressing city council members or the public are asked to complete a speaker form, you may still do so to our clerk. And give, give it to the clerk, the council, well, me, will invite speakers to step to the microphone. Please give your name and address before you get into your comments. Our remarks should be addressed to council as a whole and not exceed three minutes. Council may not respond to specific comments or questions from the public. Are there any from the public?
Yes, sir. Jolynn Gates, please step to the microphone and please speak directly into the microphone so our Facebook listeners and everyone in here can hear you. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Jolynn Gates and you want my home address from my business address?
Wherever you reside, ma'am.
260 Chatake Drive, Patasko, Ohio, 43062. Okay, I am nervous, so I'm going to address the tobacco control issue that you have on the agenda tonight. I have, I'm a concerned business owner. I have two businesses here in Reynoldsburg. I have a vapor store and I have a Sunoco station. Also sells cigarettes, papers, tobacco. I understand that they're trying to say that the teen vaping and smoking is going up where it's actually decreasing. I, in my vapor store, you cannot come in the door unless you have an ID. And you've got to be 21 and we swipe it when you come in. We get yelled at all the time. And then we also ID you when you check out. At my Sunoco, we can't very well ID you when you come in the store, but we do. We slide it through a thing when you check out to make sure you're of age to buy. I am concerned about the, some couple of things that you have in it. You say the vapor stores cannot be traced, which they can. We all pay our sales tax, so we can be traced that way. I am not against a registered license or whatever, but not for $300. You know, that is like really outrageous, in my opinion. I'm concerned about some of the add-ons that were in there, about the 2,000 feet between the businesses. I mean, I'm not 2,000 feet, I'm right across the street from each other. And what makes it nice is when a person wants to quit smoking, they come over to my vapor store. I have so many people that I have seen throughout the eight years I've been in business at my vapor store. And I've been in business Sunoco for like, I don't even know how many years I'm teen, since 1996, I believe. And I've worked there since 1979, so my husband and I both own both of those. The other thing I have is the price of the license. And I also did not like where there was a place on there where the flavored vapor products could be, you know, or cigarettes or cigars or whatever could be taken out of there or be put, add-oned into the license, I guess. Like I said, the $300 is kind of really outrageous. There is a way to trace the vapor stores now. The governor did try to attempt to do a retail license in 2021. It was, the legislature removed it from the language, from the bill. You have to be 21 to buy products as it is. I just, like I said, I just have two businesses I am concerned. I didn't realize what tonight was all going to be, whether it was going to be voted on or presented. So I really am kind of out of it right now. But I also belong to an association in Ohio. It's called Ohio Vapors, Ohio Vapors Trade Association. We have very strict rules to apply to be in that. They would also be interested in sending each one of you a letter and some information if you would be up to that. Like I said, I didn't know what tonight was going to entail, so I just wanted to let it know, be known that I am, I do have questions about it. And we do ID and we do have ways of tracing it, vaping, if that's what this is all about. Cigarettes, we already have a license for, so I'd have to get an extra license in my Sunoco to sell the few little vapor products I sell. You know, everything is out of reach of people in my vapor store or in my Sunoco. They're all behind, behind the counter or locked up. My vapor store, we have actually a place sanctioned off. If a person comes in with their kid, that that kid can go sit on the couch and play with toys because they don't need to be looking at the products, you know? So if you're under 18 or under 21, you go sit in a cage, if you, you know? Well, we call it a cage, it's not a cage, but I guess that's about it.
Your three minutes is up.
Oh, okay, well, that's about it.
But thank you for coming to speak, ma'am.
I am nervous, so.
Oh, that's okay. Molly, is there anybody else?
Yes, sir. Mr. Serak?
John Serak, 8322 Bedlington Drive, Reynoldsburg, Ohio. President Pro Tem, members of council, Mayor Begany, and Attorney Shook. Thanks for the, I appreciate the opportunity to address this council again. I usually try to come here with some real positive comments I have about our city and share that perspective. Tonight, I want to bring on two issues that have a negative effect on our city and our residents. The first is similar to COVID, it doesn't seem to ever go away, and that's fireworks. So since we're right off the weekend, I just want to share some things. So my neighbors and I continue to be, well, first of all, we're appreciative, appreciative of what the work the council's done on try to adjust and remediate the policies and your efforts, so those are appreciated. We're still very irritated and concerned. So I went on to the website of one of the retail fireworks sellers in the area and I printed off their pamphlet on safety tips and they have videos on there. And I think it's very responsibly done. So I went over it and even though it's responsibly done, I had some real interesting reactions to it. They have a number of things that are safety tips and I've just brought a few of them tonight. One is definitely do not use alcohol when using fireworks. Well, July 4th weekend, I, you know, that's questionable. How are you going to monitoring people having a few brews or a couple glasses of wine? So, you know, our neighbors were concerned about that. The second recommendation in this was follow common sense. So how many of us have heard these days, where has common sense gone? That raised a red flag. Using fireworks on hard surfaces. So one of my neighbors was setting off their fireworks in a cul-de-sac and I think the law says you have to set them off on your property. So the, another neighbor spoke with him and said, hey, why don't you set them off closer to your house so the debris falls on your cars and your house? So the fireworks were moved into his backyard immediately and they started going off. So I'm thinking, did he get a piece of plywood? Did he dig a hole to put the, put the canisters in? I didn't go check, so. The other thing was use a clear, open area away from your audience. So the recommended distances is for ground fireworks, 35 feet, that's 70 feet diameter. If you're using aerial photograph, fireworks, 150 feet, that's 300 foot diameter. So I'm looking around my neighborhood thinking, I don't know if that's possible in my neighborhood, in most neighborhoods in residential Reynoldsburg. Windy conditions. Let's use common sense and don't set off our fireworks in windy conditions. What are windy conditions? That wasn't spelled out. Always wear safety glasses. I don't know of anybody in my neighborhood that wears safety glasses. This one really kind of got my nerves going. Use courteous and, be courteous and cautious with animals. Go inform your neighbor that you're going to set off your firework explosives and let them, just inform them that you're going to take some time to terrorize their pets. And believe me, I've spoken to dozens of people with pets, you know, you know that. I'm not preaching to the choir, I know that. The other thing was be courteous to your neighbors, notify them that you're going to shoot off fireworks. And if they're veterans, make sure you let them know that, you know, that might trigger their PTSD and give them flashbacks, but we want to make sure and thank them for their service. I apologize for the cynicism there. So, you know, I was going over all these safety tips and I wondered.
Sir?
Three minutes?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, I'm going to.
You can finish your last though, if you want.
Thanks. So I'll sneak in a one-minute comment on, especially since the police officers here. I've noticed an uptick in our sidewalks being blocked by cars. Just in the last couple of days, I saw an adult man jogging with his stroller with an adult paraplegic in the stroller. Don't know how he's going to get around the cars. Another mother with her baby in a stroller, don't know how she's going to get around the cars. My wife just had hip surgery and with a walker. Coming here, I saw a mother with three little kids in her stroller. And I can tell you right now, if you come to my neighborhood, there'll be at least six cars blocking the sidewalks completely. So if the code enforces or police could maybe visit those people blocking the sidewalks, it'd be appreciated. But thanks for the extra minute, appreciate it. Thanks very much.
No problem. Thank you. Is there anybody else, Molly?
Yes, sir. Mr. Green?
Hello, my name is Ethan Green. Before I start off, I want to thank Councilwoman Strickland for inviting me. Also want to thank them, you all. I am a boy from Birmingham, Alabama. And when I moved up here, with no friends, no family, just fraternity brothers, they said you should live near Reynoldsburg and stay away from on the west side. And I thank you for the work that y'all do to, I've really enjoyed. I've been here for four years. I live at 5415 Yorkshire Terrace, off of No Bigsby. And I really do enjoy living in the Reynoldsburg community, especially when thinking back on the time where I didn't know where I was supposed to stay. I just knew again, don't go to the west side, stay away from Hilltop. So real quick, my name is Ethan Green and I work for a company called Caption Call. We provide captioning phones for people that are hard of hearing at no cost to them. You'll never get a bill from us. We are federally funded program through the Disability Act. And my big thing is here is to make the council aware and also other people aware that this is at no cost to them. And that as long as they have a landline, a Wi-Fi connection, or either just a cellphone with Bluetooth, which we all have, then you qualify. And then also, we're doing great things, which makes me feel great because a lot of people, especially our elders, have trouble hearing young kids or even maybe yourself have trouble hearing on the phone. And our device makes it to where it's captioning, so they can read what's saying and also playback. And also even, we are able to record their messages. So if it's a doctor's appointment, so like for me, I have a broken tooth on my left side. My doctor calls me and says, hey, you know, we need to get that broken tooth taken care of. I'm going to forget because he's probably going to do like four months out, but I can go back and play it on my phone. And I guess again, the best part about this is it's not just older people, it's even for our veterans, it's even for our young kids that have hearing aids and struggle. We also have, came out with an app recently that connects with your phone as well and Bluetooth to hearing aids. Lastly, we do English and Spanish. And besides that, for anyone on Facebook, my number is 614-282-9490. And if anyone would like more information, I'd be happy to help you. And the last thing, I promise you, is the good thing, okay, come on.
No, you're good.
All right, all right, Mr. Baker.
When you said it, I looked, I was like, oh, no, you're good.
All right. But no, the, we have white glove service, which means especially for your loved ones, our elders. We have someone coming to the home, we schedule a time that's good for them. They sit down, get the phone set up in a place that they like, go over this technology because technology can be scary to anyone, especially how advanced it is now. My iPhone does everything. And just make them feel comfortable and make a couple of phone calls. If y'all don't mind, I'll leave you with some literature. My phone number is on these flyers. And again, thank you for letting me come and present. And thank you for making Reynoldsburg a place I love to call home. And my parents are very impressed because they get paranoid. But you know, once I'm like, hey, it's not as bad as you think, I'm not on the west side, mom, chill. Is there any questions before I leave? No, no?
Oh, there's one question.
Oh, hey! Okay.
All right, so question number one, is this service just around central Ohio or is this?
The whole United States?
Second question, what frat?
Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, the oldest, the coldest fraternity, you know? My ice cold brothers?
I'm familiar.
Hey, Phi. Hey, Phi.
Welcome.
Any, anything else?
Anything else? Nope, thank you, sir.
Hey, thank you.
Shoot, I ought to look into that service. My wife said I don't listen, but then I call a selective hearing. Anyway, is there another one? Another speaker? No, okay. Seeing how there's no more speakers, there seems to be any communications unless somebody wants to say anything. Okay, well, we'll go on to motions.
President, there's two presentations, and the mayor's opportunity to speak.
Ah, okay. Was there something that was sent in for you to read in?
Yes, let me go grab that in just a moment. You can go ahead and come back.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and do the, uh, the two presentations. The first one is Tobacco Control Initiative Presentation. Who's doing that? Okay, we'll skip to the next one. I see there's a Rotary at Five Point Intersection Discussion, discussion about funding a roundabout. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, President Pro Tem Baker, members of council, and everybody watching at home. I'm sure you were interested in hearing where we are at. A number of conversations have revolved around the idea of a roundabout at the location at the five-way intersection on two-fifty-six, around two-fifty-six. We're at a point right now where we kind of have to have a conversation about what direction council would like to go with this particular project. We do have an opportunity to apply for a MORPSY Tributal Funds Grant. The application is actually due July fifteenth. This would cost the city approximately twenty thousand eight hundred dollars. The final application is due in September, and notification will be shortly thereafter. And by shortly, I think they said possibly February if everybody's on staff. This doesn't guarantee that we go through with the process, but what it does, it does allow for the grant itself to kind of proceed and the application process to move forward. Where ultimately, as you can see in some of the diagrams there, you see a rough cost estimate. The cost estimate is around five million dollars, and it would be an eighty-twenty split with MORPSY picking up the eighty percent. The city of Reynoldsburg would be responsible for the other twenty percent. However, given the timing and the complexity of this particular project, that would be eligible to be slated in for Ohio Public Work Commission grant dollars, which would take up a lion's share of the remainder of that twenty percent. So, the cost to the city would be not insignificant, but not certainly five million dollars. That being said, this is not an easy project. There's going to be a lot that will go in with that, and I did not want to waste the taxpayers' dollars or I did not want to waste council's time pursuing a grant like this if the intention of council is not to move forward. I would hate to be awarded a grant and say, and turn it down after the fact. Some of the drawings that you see that have been submitted into council are, it is a very generic sketch of a five-way intersection. It's probably similar that if you've been paying attention to the Traffic and Transportation Commission, it's similar to that. This does not mean that this is exactly what it would look like, but there's a lot of things in here that is a complex project. I can try and answer as many questions I can about this particular project, but I'm much more familiar with the grant process. If you were to go forward and say, yes, let's go ahead and see what this looks like, if we are notified in February of twenty-three, the preliminary design work would be done, and that would probably cost approximately four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. That would be what primarily would be our share as a city. So, for budgetary purposes, obviously, we need to know that sooner rather than later. Some of those funds might be retrievable during an OPWC grant, but you're looking at a possibility of probably two years in terms of the engineering work that would be done. So, that pushes to twenty-three, to twenty-four, twenty-four to twenty-five before construction. So, this is something that is obviously going to take a long time out there. Given the limited resources that the city has and the general nature for a project this big, even though, you know, most of the funds would be taken care of between grants, there are a number of other initiatives, including a service building, improvements to Civic Park and things of that nature, that would have to be weighed and balanced with this. So, with that, I would turn it to all of you to have a discussion and provide any direction that you have for us, keeping in mind that the July fifteenth deadline for this first initial thing is due by the fifteenth. So, with that, I'll turn it back to council.
Is there any questions or comments to the mayor about this? Oh, Councilwoman Bryant?
I'm wondering, have we looked at any other options? I mean, this is a very difficult intersection, it's prone to accident. It probably should have been fixed ten to fifteen years ago, but we, this is where we are. Are there any other options aside from a roundabout that would be realistic?
Well, those are two different questions, different options and those that are realistic. We do know that the Ohio Department of Transportation is going to be in the area resurfacing that intersection basically from Lancaster all the way to the county, the Fairfield County line, so all of that is going to be done over the next year and a half. So, you'll see improvements in the restriping of the area, better directional, things of that nature. However, given the complexity and the size of it, it's a five-way. You know, we've actually toyed around with the idea of, do we find a way to alter the transportation path on either Lancaster or Graham? So, you kind of find a way to put it so it's a four-spoke five-way, or instead of a five-way, it comes down to four, and then you have it that way. But again, then you're looking at significant purchase price of land for this particular project, which, again, it doesn't necessarily solve anything, it just makes some of the engineering a little bit difficult. And as most of the engineers that have told me specifically about this project is, you can do it because if you have enough money, you can pretty much do anything. That does not necessarily mean that it's going to be the best option. You know, roundabouts traditionally are seen as traffic movers, so you'll have less stop-and-go traffic. They do say, some of the cities that we've talked to that actually have a five-pole kind of roundabout, they say your head-on collisions are significantly reduced, but your side-to-side collisions increase greatly, some more upwards of sixty percent of an increase in your side swipes as people are kind of rubbing cars together as they're trying to navigate that. So, there's pros and cons to that. Obviously, the pro is, you know, not head-on collisions are typically much more life-threatening as opposed to the side-to-side, but still, that is something to consider. Beyond that, there's not a lot left out to do outside of the striping and maybe re-timing signals, but I think that's more of a delay of the inevitable. I do know that one of the things that may reduce traffic in the area in general is the Licking County Engineers Office and the Fairfield County Engineers Office have submitted plans out to bid for a seventy-Taylor Road interchange. So, you will start to see that process move forward probably around the same time, twenty-six to twenty-eight, depending on the speed of Intel, which is really driving that project. It's always been kind of floating out there, but with Intel coming in, it's definitely picked up a lot of steam, so that may reduce the overall traffic in the two-fifty-six area, which could help. But then again, with development moving out further east, it's, you know, are we really going to see a significant reduction in that all the way across?
Councilmember Savad?
So, I think, I know it's well-known to the mayor, but I think it's well-known to everybody that I'm a fan of roundabouts. But I'm also aware of the financials. So, with the caveat that I know that any money that's there now cannot be there later, period, I assume that if nothing changes, we could apply for this in a year.
Yeah, the only time that it's, due to COVID, some of the tributal funds that were used for different grant programs had actually been really spent out. So, you know, whether it's the Ohio Department of Transportation, OPWC, or the MORPSY, they've actually spent out a lot of this, which is why we would have to wait as long as we would to get these funds, just because of the emphasis on infrastructure in general. That being said, this is something that can be looked at again a year from now, but the process itself, again, if you're looking at it, you know, we're in, you know, July of twenty-two, so you're looking at a construction in twenty-five or twenty-six, so you're looking at a pretty significant timeframe for it. So, the traffic isn't going to get any better, but then at the same time, you know, this will be here if you decide to go ahead and hold off on this one, just given some of the other things that are coming up.
Councilwoman Strickland?
Thank you. So, I am also a fan of the five-way. However, I believe with everything that we have going on that's coming down the pipeline, you know, my recommendation is to revisit maybe in a year or two, just because of, again, we have to start prioritizing what that work is going to look like and what the funding is going to also look like. So, again, I'm totally a fan of the five-way, you know, roundabouts and everything, but just because we have to start prioritizing and understand how much work and also the funding amount needs to be applied to those particular projects. Thank you.
Thank you for the feedback.
Anybody else? Councilwoman Lawson-Roe?
Thank you, President Pro Tem. I'd like to know how would this impact our Streets and Roads programs? Because we already have significant amount of streets that need to be addressed and are pushed back to the next year and the next year and so forth. I'd just like to hear your feedback on that, please.
All right, so with, given a generic, simple cul-de-sac, for instance, you're looking at a cost to resurface a work in a traditional court being anywhere between twenty-five and thirty-five thousand dollars, give or take a little bit, depending on the size. So, if you're looking at a twenty thousand dollar cost just for the application fee to get started, that's where you're looking at is kind of a cost of reduction in that regard. If you're looking at the safety study as well as the engineering, which could cost upwards of four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, now you're getting into something significantly higher. Just as for a frame of reference, you're looking at Taylor Road Southwest. That project in itself is about a million dollars. If you're looking at Crofton Place, Crofton Court, Crofton Circle, that area, which is going to be done really actually in the next week to ten days, you're looking at that as probably being relatively close in cost to about four-hundred-and-some-odd thousand dollars, give or take a few pennies here and there. So, you're looking at a significant reduction overall that would be used for residential roads for this particular project, just for the engineering phase, which this would impact, again, our twenty-twenty-three streets budget.
Selfishly, I'm asking about Birchview.
Mm-hmm. Given, given the following, and actually, somebody just asked me about this as we were walking in. Given that there's some federal dollars that are at play right now, Congresswoman Beatty, who is our representative, has submitted a funding request that is passed out of committee and is now in the House. That would allow for some additional funds to be used to improve the Coda area that is located on Birchview. Depending upon the result of that, that will dictate what side of Birchview that we work on. The plan is to have that addressed in twenty-twenty-three. If Coda is going to get those improvements, which is a significant investment in that area, and they're talking about, you know, digging out and making sure that there's enough concrete padding in for the buses and things of that nature, then we would shift and work on the south side of the street, so the south part of Birchview, so everything kind of on the bottom loop of everything. If not, then that is a potential question that we can try and work in conjunction with Coda, that if they are already going to have to do some improvements, that we coordinate with them and maybe do the entire, the north side. But given the cost and the size of that one, we would probably assume right now that we would like to do half in twenty-three and then the other half in twenty-four. It just depends on which way the federal dollars flow for the other half of the project. Now, that being said, there's a lot of factors that play into, you know, exactly, you know, what our road budget looks like. There's things as far as the gas tax. If the gas tax remains stable, then obviously that helps with some of our funding. If our continued dollars that are coming in from our income tax and things like that are set up, then we're going to be looking to have a very similar road program for next year. So, we try and, what we try and do is get a list of roads, and that's actually on the agenda for this evening, to kind of get an idea of, all right, of all the roads that are bad in Reynoldsburg, which ones are the worst roads? And then we try and prioritize those and then try and puzzle-piece it together with the auditor's office on what our budget will allow for in any given time, not including the unknown of materials cost, asphalt cost, things like that, which this year has been significantly higher just due to supply chain shortages. So, in short, Birchview is going to be done, it is aimed to be started in twenty-three, and then the other half in twenty-four, that is what is on the outline for right now.
Thank you.
But I like you for getting right to the point on the Birchview question.
Councilmember Pacaro?
Thank you. So, for the five-way or possible going to be roundabout, whatever, there are two costs that you mentioned, one is twenty thousand eight hundred, that's two thousand eight, twenty thousand eight hundred and another four hundred and fifty thousand. So, how much of that will be covered by the grants and how much will be for the city's money?
The twenty thousand eight hundred would be at the cost of the city. The four hundred and fifty thousand initially would be taken out of the city's budget. That would automatically be out there with a possibility that if we are successful in the OPWC, the Ohio Public Work Commission grant, that some of that money be able, may be able to be recouped, but that would be something that would only happen in, if I'm doing my math correctly, probably two thousand twenty-five, which means that even though we would spend the money next year, we would not get a reimbursement on those funds until two and a half years later.
Thank you.
One comment I have about the five-way, I think what would help right now is, like you said, timing of the lights, ODOT's going to be out there. If they can at least fix the timing, if you're coming north on two-fifty-six, when you get to that Livingston Interchange, you're trying to turn left, that's, there's issue right there because people try to speed through, because that light, that turn signal does not hold on. It's just like right there at the intersection of Taylor going on to two-fifty-six, that turn light does not hold on, and people, you know, it's red and you at least see four more cars trying to get through because they don't want to sit there waiting any longer. So, while they're out there, have them look at that.
The Ohio Department of Transportation will become my very good friend, and they'll probably stop returning my phone calls at some point because those two lights are, the two of the lights that we get the most calls on in general.
Okay, yeah, keep them beating their ears about that. And also, oh, there's another thing, especially down the road. I mentioned it before, but I'll just bring it back up since we're talking about roads, about doing Bryce Road north of Main Street as you get into the residential area. I know that street's going to be needing some tender loving care, especially in certain spots. And looking a little farther down the road at Rosehill itself is going to be needing some tender loving care. So, we got to keep that in mind while we're talking about a roundabout and how much that's going to cost. Some of our other existing roads are going to be needing some attention here soon. And I didn't know if you want to let those here and those at home watching, if they want the city to look at their street? Because some, you know, come out and look at and see if their street needs to be redone, if it's okay. Who do they contact?
While I am happy to hear anyone, most people don't need your invitation to send me that their roads are bad. So, we do, but we will try and, you know, obviously, we've done a much better job the last few years since Issue eleven has passed that has allowed us to have a more robust street program. So, but we are working on it as best we can. And always investigating grants and other federal dollars as well.
Okay. Anybody else, questions, concerns, comments? Okay, thank you, Ms. Sorry.
If I may, do you mind if I go ahead and go over a few other items just for awareness?
Yeah.
Okay. I did want to update everybody who is watching and everyone here just about specifically a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to thank the Street Department, the Parks and Rec Department, the Communications Department, everybody who helped with the fireworks celebration this last Friday night, which seems to go, two Fridays ago now, or one Friday ago. It was a phenomenal show, it was a great thing. We had a lot of great food trucks, we had a lot of great fun, the bounce houses were a hit. And again, the fireworks were amazing. I also like to thank the involvement of all of those, including the Reynoldsburg Police Department and all of that, as Turo Township Fire Department, the Reynoldsburg Community Association, and all those that participated in the parade the following Monday. I know a number of people were very happy that the fireworks are on a Friday, and then they, no one had to get up really early for the parade the next day. It was a wonderful thing there. But I also want to talk about Main Street. For those of you that are watching, there was a little bit more construction moving on today. The first thing that you'll notice is the sidewalk from the bridge to ultimately what I'll say is the end of VIX, the intersection there at Lancaster, that is actually going to have their bricks are going to be placed in it as we speak. So, I believe most of it got up to around the veterinary hospital today, and those bricks on that path will continue on hopefully over the next couple of days until they reach the VIX intersection. The wall at the Cotner Funeral Home is continuing to be worked on. I believe that they poured the steps for that today, so they'll let that cure. The next step for those is obviously working on that sidewalk portion of everything and then working past that all the way to the intersection at Jackson. As we mentioned on social media last night, made the announcement earlier today even, Jackson is going to be closed southbound traffic starting tomorrow sometime in mid to late afternoon as we move forward to improving a couple of things. One, the curb widths are going to be adjusted to help for easier flow of traffic, which will also include stormwater improvements all the way throughout. And then again, the continued streetscape plan all the way. So, that will happen there. We are being told that it is going to last four weeks, which means it will probably last more than that, depending on weather, but we will update you as that process goes through. Once the sidewalk portion of the street on the south side of the street is done, they will switch over and move over to the other side of the street, so starting basically again at that intersection at Jackson, and then they will work their way back to Memorial Plaza, including some of those other areas. I've been in constant communication, letting those businesses know what's going to come up, and we are developing a plan that will be able to help those businesses make sure that their parking is accessible, their entrances are accessible for residents. They want to partake of something at Prost or Tempe Taco and things of that nature. But hopefully, that project continues to move along. That side of the street is not near a complexa project as the other side. There's no retaining walls on that side, so in essence, you're looking at, you know, the curb and then the sidewalk emplacement and things of that nature. So, hopefully, it will move significantly faster on that. You also may have seen today the preliminary work that is. You also may have seen today the preliminary work that is being done on the second phase of the Main Street project, which goes from Jackson to Wagner Road. Today's crew is out inspecting the sewer lines as part of Columbia Gas in their preparation to come on out and get their work done. Again, like the other side of Main Street, this work is not going to be as complex or in-depth as what it was in the first phase of everything. There's a lot of the gas lines that are actually on the other side of the buildings, on the backsides of the buildings. So it's not going to be as in-depth. You're not going to have to go 10 feet and then do a connection and pressure test and then wait 24 hours and things like that. So that one again should move a little bit faster. The Columbia Gas has been very accommodating and we hope to see them out there starting sometime next week. And again, that same process of the streetscape all the way throughout. As we get more and more updates for that, I will make sure and share that with everyone. We also have some news on our Graham Road project. This is part of the, to find ways to end the sidewalks to nowhere. The Graham Road project will begin in late July, starting with the Franklin County Engineers, who are basically going to be putting in the pedestrian bridge that goes from basically just past the Livingston House to connect on the bridge to the other side to the five-way. That will start in late July, and once we have that traffic plan solidified, we'll go ahead and get that out to you. In addition, once that is, project is underway, then the city will go ahead and begin its sidewalk program to put that path from the corner of Graham and Palmer. They will extend to the bridge and then across the bridge over to the other side to the five-way intersection itself to provide much more accessibility. Again, that will begin sometime in late July. And last but not least, everyone here at City Hall is switching over to Tomato Fest time. So for all of the Street Department, the Parks Department, this is an all hands-on-deck type of thing. So I know that we will make sure that those opportunities are presented to everyone here, members of council, if they would like to come in for a shift and work the gate or anything else that we have got going on. But I'm also looking for some volunteers potentially for a couple of events. The first one would be a spaghetti eating, spaghetti eating contest. That's going to be sponsored by an unnamed source. We'll get that officially out to everybody. But if you like your pasta and you want to go ahead and do a spaghetti eating contest, we have a spot for you. We also have for the second year in a row, the Dunk Tank. We're kind of going to, we've got a couple of different competitors for this one that are, we're going to sponsor, including some of our, you know, youth-oriented programs that are here in the city of Reynoldsburg for that. So if you would like to go ahead and take a turn in the Dunk Tank, I would say it's fun, but it, let's just say it's for a really good cause. And the more of you that participate, the more the members of the community have the opportunity to throw baseballs at you and dunk you in water. So that might be a popular thing. With that, President Protam Baker, I go ahead and turn it back to you.
Thank you. Adding note on the Dunk Tank, I participated in that last year and it was fun. You know, I think there's some members in this audience that deliberately tried to hit me with the baseball, but no hard feelings. Keith, I'm looking at you. Okay, so we're going to move on over to-
President Baker, I do have the email comment. This comment is from Juliette Doris Williams. First, my comment should be construed as, as anti-fireworks, should not, I'm sorry, should not be construed as anti-fireworks. I love fireworks. I do not love fireworks just outside my door and over my house at all times at night for days on end, many days before a given holiday, the actual holiday, and days well after the given holiday, and sometimes well into the late night and early morning. I do not have pets, but I've been in a number of conversations with our local Nextdoor app where people report about the effects of their, on their pets. This is a longstanding conversation and other neighbors seem to have some sort of remedy for pets, usually involving medication. Most people with and without pets, it seems, brush this off as a mild inconvenience. Unfortunately, the pets can't tell as if they agree with that assessment. What also seems to be brushed off as an inconvenience by many in these same conversation is the impact of living in a war zone inside your own home. Because that is what it feels like and sounds like, a literal war zone just on the other side of your front door or just outside your windows. And the layer of being a trauma survivor where you literally feel unsafe in your home because you don't know if it's fireworks or gunfire just outside your door, your house, a modern house, is not soundproof or fireproof. Your house that is supposed to be your sanctuary of peace, where you are now a hostage to other people's fun, no escape. I wonder if any of that was considered in your deliberations in this so-called city of respect, where is the respect for homeowners who need to rise early for work the next day but are being kept up at night by the less, by the fun of others? We are brushed off as whining. We are told it's just a little inconvenience. An inconvenience is when your restaurant is out of your favorite dish. An inconvenience is when your grocery store closes at an earlier hour than when you would prefer. It is not inconvenient, it is cruel. It is unfeeling, it is disrespectful, it is harmful to many of us. I am disappointed in the shortsightedness of my city. It is my hope that you will reconsider your position on this ordinance. Surely there is a place where do not harm matters in this conversation. Ms. Doris Williams was unaware of the final ordinance that was passed and she had an addendum to her original when she was given the actual ordinance that was passed. I would have not been opposed to the ordinance as written with a two-hour limit. That is not what is happening, however. As I said, the fireworks start days before and continue after the holiday and for several hours. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to go ahead and move on over to motions. The first, the first motion on the agenda is a motion to approve the resolution recognizing National Minority Health Awareness Month. Councilmember Lawson Rowe?
Thank you, President Protam. I'd like to offer comments prior to reading the resolution, if I may. Mental health and wellness does not receive the same elevation as physical health and early detection health and wellness. Speaking for myself, we can no longer wait until these two health and wellness initiatives are balanced. So today, I elevate mental health and wellness in our community. My family and friends are no different from yours when it comes to health and wellness concerns. Since we have been navigating the great pandemic of 2020 and beyond, our mental health has risen to the forefront, forefront of health initiatives. I do not believe in coincidences. So today I have the high honor to offer this resolution recognizing National Minority Mental Health and Well, Mental Health Awareness Month. Please make no mistake, there is a mental health crisis in this community and our children and young adults are increasingly victims of not being supported or diagnosed. We must break the stigma, one person at a time. So without further ado, I will read the resolution. Immediately following, I invite Madam CEO of Adam, Adam H., Erica Clark Jones, and W. Shawna Gibbs to the podium for remarks and to receive a copy of the resolution. A resolution recognizing National Minority Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas, mental health conditions are real and prevalent in the lives of residents across our state and our community. And whereas, the Franklin County Adam H. Board helps to address these issues and ensures that every person has access to quality, affordable, and culturally relevant services. And whereas, the city of Reynoldsburg recognizes there are many factors that can have an impact on an individual's mental health and their ability to access care, including race, ethnicity, gender identity, socioeconomic status, sexual orientation, religious disability status, and geographic location. And whereas, furthermore, the burden carried by people of color, Black immigrants and Indigenous people of color, BIPOC in the United States includes stress from the anticipation of discrimination and violence in everyday life, which can contribute to depression, anxiety, and other mental health issues. And whereas, engaging in prevention, early detection, and early intervention are effective ways to reduce the burden of mental health illnesses as well as other chronic conditions. And whereas, beginning in 2005, activist Bibi Moore Campbell and Linda Warton Boyd advocated for and succeeded in establishing July as National Minority Mental Health Awareness Month. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Reynoldsburg that we do hereby proclaim July 2022 National Minority Mental Health Awareness Month and reaffirm the city's commitment to promote public awareness of mental health challenges and improve access to mental health treatment and services to communities of color, eliminate existing barriers, and prioritize the behavioral and mental health needs of those disproportionately impacted by poor mental health outcomes.
Good evening, President Baker, Chairwoman Lawson Rowe, Mayor Baggany. My name's Erica Clark Jones and it's my honor to be with you tonight to receive this resolution. I am joined this evening by the Adam H. Director of Education, W. Shawna Gibbs, who is here with me. And I am happy to serve as the CEO of the Franklin County Alcohol, Drug, and Mental Health Board, or your Adam H. And on behalf of the Adam H. Board of Trustees and our network of more than 30 community-based providers, I'm honored to accept this resolution recognizing this important month as National Minority Mental Health Awareness Month. According to the National Alliance on Mental Illness, in Ohio alone, 1.9 million adults face the reality of living with a mental health condition. Anyone can experience the challenges of mental illness regardless of their background, and it does not discriminate based on race, gender, socioeconomic status, or identity. However, cultural background, lived experience, and identity can make access to mental health treatment much more difficult. And access is what I want to stress there. Here in our community, we know there's still work to be done. In 2020, Adam H. conducted a community needs assessment to better understand the strengths and opportunities of our behavioral health system. The findings showed clear barriers for individuals receiving care rooted in social determinants of health and a need for more culturally relevant services. In addition, Adam H. monitors these key community metrics to evaluate the health and well-being of all of our residents that receive care from Adam H. There is no doubt that the last few years have taken a toll on all of us. And Councilmember Lawson Rowe, I believe you mentioned that. But especially those from those most vulnerable communities. Just a few statistics. For Black adult males specifically, the suicide rate has doubled since 2010. We have also sadly seen an alarming rise in suicide rates among our Black youth in Franklin County. According to a recent study from Nationwide Children's Hospital, suicide among African-American girls has risen to 6.6%, risen by 6.6% for girls aged 15 to 17. And when we look at Black and Indigenous people of color, BIPOC, LGBTQ youth across the nation, studies show they're more likely to consider and attempt suicides than are non-BIPOC LGBTQ youth. With youth mental health as at a point of crisis, Adam H. is proud to partner with Southeast Healthcare to provide prevention services in Reynoldsburg City Schools to support all of their students in the journey to mental health and wellness. In our region, that is growing by both size and diversity each day, together, we must continue to build the capacity of our behavioral health system to address unmet needs and also ensure the system is responsive to the community as a whole. At Adam H., we are focused on increasing investments that provide access to culturally and linguistically competent care for our immigrant and refugee communities. I'd like to thank you, Councilwoman Lawson Rowe, for sponsoring this resolution, as well as this astute body for bringing awareness to the unique struggles that marginalized communities and all persons face regarding mental illness. Adam H. will be uplifting the experiences of underrepresented communities during this month of July, and we will hold these truths year-round. And we appreciate the city of Reynoldsburg for being a partner in these efforts. Together, we can realize our vision of a community where anyone affected by mental illness, no matter their background, culture, ethnicity, or identity, can get the quality care they deserve. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any questions or comments from council awareness? Councilwoman, Councilwoman Bryant?
I'm feeling chatty tonight. Thank you for the work that you're doing. The only thing harder than getting a man to go to counseling is getting a Black man to go to counseling. So I thank you for what you're doing. And yeah, I think we've all been left alone with our own thoughts for far too long. And the PSA that tells us it's okay to be okay was met with my response of, who the hell is okay? So I thank you.
Anybody else on council? I'm going to make a comment. You're right, Councilwoman Bryant. It is hard to get a Black male to go see therapy. As being a Black male, I used to think that it was pointless. Only crazies go see counseling, but that's not true. You know, I grew up in the era of all walk it off, toughen up and all that. And sometimes that just don't work. You have to go talk to somebody because if you keep it bottled in, you're going to explode. And sometimes you're going to explode the very wrong way. That's going to hurt yourself, hurt people that you love, and hurt people that you don't know. So me personally, I would say if you're having some sort of especially mental issue, please talk to somebody. Because you can only get help if you ask for help. Anybody else have anything? Oh, thank you, Councilwoman Lawson Rowe, for bringing this resolution forward. Is there anybody else? No? Okay. Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve this resolution? So moved by Councilwoman Bryant. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Lawson Rowe. All, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm assuming that Councilwoman Lawson Rowe would like to get a picture with you. Shawna. Ms. Gibbs? How you doing, Shawna? Okay. The second motion on the agenda is a motion to appoint members to the City of Reynoldsburg Board of Tax Review in accordance with the provision of the Higher Rights Code Section 718-111. This motion will appoint members to the City of Reynoldsburg, City of Reynoldsburg Board of Tax Review. These appointments have to be made every two years. The proposed appointees are Jonathan Harmonak. Excuse me if I butchered that.
Harmsec.
Harmsec, thank you. Jonathan Harmsec, Mildred Johnson, and Franklin Davis. They each will serve a two-year term. The board meets when a resident files an appeal with the Tax Commissioner regarding their tax return. Are there any comments or questions regarding this motion? Okay, seeing none, may I have a motion to approve this resolution? Motion by Councilwoman Bryant, is there a second? Second by Councilmember Pacoel? Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it, motion's carried. Reports, moving on to reports, Auditor's reports?
The Auditor's Office submitted the budget by department and classification for the month of May 2022. And the Clerk of Court report, the Clerk of Court submitted monies collected from the courts held in April in the amount of $20,400.
Thank you, Ms. Proussier. Seeing how there is no Development Park and Recreation Committee meeting today, we are going to go ahead and move on to the Public Safety Law and Courts Committee meeting. Councilmember Bryant?
Thank you, President Protam. This is the Public Safety Law and Courts Committee meeting for July 11, 2022. Members in attendance- Members in attendance are Councilmember Cotner, Councilmember Packerell, Councilmember Lawson Rowe, myself, and you, President Pro Tem. First item on the agenda is an ordinance establishing Chapter 709 Tobacco Retailer License of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Reynoldsburg. This legislation is before the committee as a work session only. Attorney Shook, entertain us, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair Bryant. This is an item of discussion that was requested, I believe, by Council President Jenkins. Information sheets have been presented to the city and now to council regarding proposed legislation for tobacco retail licensure. What we've presented to council in the packet is frequently asked questions and other information regarding the licensing of tobacco retailers in the city, as well as a proposed ordinance. And in addition, we have submitted a sample ordinance from the city of Hamilton, Ohio. There are approximately nine cities in Ohio who have passed similar legislation, more than half of which are located in Cuyahoga County. The city of Columbus has passed this, the city of Cincinnati has as well. Most of the communities, when it comes to licensing and enforcement of this particular ordinance, rely upon their local Board of Health. As the city of Reynoldsburg does not have a Board of Health, that would be certainly an open question to council as to how it is, if you wanted to pursue this legislation, how that would be monitored and enforced.
Are there any questions or comments from the committee on this legislation? Counsel? Yes, Councilmember Lawson Rowe.
Thank you, Chair Bryant. Attorney Shook, would you please offer any opportunities that we, as a city, have to protect our children and young people?
From tobacco vaping, I assume?
Yes.
Okay. Well, currently, you know, we enforce, you know, the laws that are on the books in the city, as well as the state of Ohio. The law in the state of Ohio is that you cannot sell tobacco products to individuals under the age of 21. Our police department does, from time to time, use confidential informants to make buys at particular stores to see if they are violating that particular ordinance. We have seen retailers and individuals who work for retailers come into mayor's court and into Franklin County Municipal Court cited with that violation, and we address it accordingly. Beyond that, you know, we don't really have a lot of other authority when it comes to tobacco beyond what's in the state and local law.
Okay, I have another question, please, Attorney Shook. So Columbus is working to have some sort of ordinance or a ban, if I understand correctly. So with Reynoldsburg being in three counties, and the Board, is it the Board of Health that would be the enforcer of anyone that does not comply? So how would the city have worked to partner with other county, other counties?
Well, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have the authority to force the licking Fairfield and Franklin County Board of Health to administratively approve these kinds of licenses or to oversee compliance with those licenses. We would have to do that inside the city. There are some municipalities in Ohio that have their own municipal Board of Health. We do not have that. If we were to pass it in-house, and there are a couple of smaller villages in Cuyahoga County who have done it in-house, and they have typically done it through either their service department or through their police department.
Did you have a follow-up, Councilmember? Go ahead.
I wonder what opportunities would we, as a municipality, have in terms of educating the community?
I mean, that's probably something that we could brainstorm. I think anybody here on council could probably envision, you know, methods that would be preferable to educating the public, such as outreach to youth, cooperation with our schools, information packets here available at City Hall, online outreach, Facebook outreach. The city obviously has a pretty robust social media presence, but those standard ways, and then any other way that council would like to discuss or come up with.
Is that all your follow-ups?
No, ma'am.
Still going?
Another question.
All right.
So we heard from a neighbor in our community that has a couple of businesses that offer tobacco products. She mentioned the $300 retail license. Is that, is that amount pretty standard across the board with other municipalities?
I have not seen that amount in the other municipalities. What I've seen is anywhere from $100 to $250. You know, when you set a licensure fee, you know, for any type of business, and we've done that with solicitors and with rental properties and things of that nature, that fee is supposed to be calculated to reimburse the city for the administrative time necessary to administer that program. So if we're looking at a tobacco retail license here in the city of Reynoldsburg, we need to consider which department's gonna take control of that licensing, who is going to be in charge of overseeing compliance with the licensure, and determine just how much administrative and city time goes into that program, and then based on that amount of time, determine the appropriate amount of the annual licensing fee.
Done? Okay. And basically, piggybacking off of Councilmember Lawson's row questions, the woman who spoke at the beginning of the meeting mentioned that something about, you know, tracing or finding people that, you know, something that that can be done through sales tax. I didn't quite catch that. What exactly is the goal?
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, it's not really, at least from my, at least it's not my policy, it's not my proposal. But my understanding is that, of course, the state has a licensure process for tobacco retailers, but there is not a licensure process for retailers who sell vaping products, which, of course, is increasing in popularity over the last decade or so. While sales tax can certainly be a way for the state to monitor those kinds of businesses, it really doesn't allow for a lot of local control. So I suppose that's the rationale for wanting to license it here at the city level.
So as our city attorney, do you feel that the laws of the state are sufficient?
I make no determination on that.
Okay. And the vaping, you saying that there is not anything that traces sales on vape?
Well, sure, they do have, they do have to have a vendor's license to the state, and they pay sales taxes. I suppose on a surface level, that monitors how much business they're doing, certainly not as detailed as the licensure process for regular tobacco products at the state.
And about how many people do you think we would need to oversee such a thing?
Well, you're certainly looking at at least one or two administrative assistants here with the city would have to oversee implementation of the program, forms creation, notify known tobacco retailers within the city of their registration requirements, then accept those registrations, and process those fees. In addition, follow up with any retailer who failed to properly register with the city, or any other retailer who we identify, who has not registered with the city. Then additional enforcement would fall to the police department to ensure that that, those tobacco retailers are in fact following through with their licensure requirements, and if there's any violations, that that gets reported typically directly to my office, and then we could take enforcement action from there. So it's not exactly easy to identify how much administrative time goes into something like that, but having some experience with both the vacant property and rental registration processes, it does take a fair amount of administrative time, I'd say.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions from the committee? What about counsel? All right, so I guess we need to take a vote on whether we want this to move forward or whether we table it. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Lawson Rowe?
I don't have a motion. I would recommend that we table the work session until we actually have a presentation from the organization that was on the agenda to offer a presentation so that we can have more information for more robust discussion.
Thank you, Councilmember. Clerk Prasher, do we know when they'll be able to come in and do that presentation?
I wasn't aware that they weren't attending tonight.
Thank you.
So you don't necessarily need a motion. You can just, we'll get in contact and find out when they'll next be able to attend a meeting.
And to be clear, Chair Bryant, there's no legislation to move forward this evening. All we provided at this point are information sheets, as well as a sample ordinance from the city of Hamilton. I didn't want to go through the process of drafting our own ordinance unless I knew that that's something that council supported.
Absolutely. Thank you. I would move that we table this for the time being. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lawson Rowe. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes four to one. Second item on our agenda tonight is an ordinance appropriating funds from the unappropriated IT computer fund to an account in the police department and declaring an emergency. Chief.
Good evening, Chairwoman Bryant, members of the committee. In December, this body passed ordinance to pay, or encumber, I'm sorry, allocate funds to pay a FLOC contract. We received that bill in early July and paid that bill. What we found is that the money was budgeted, actually, in the IT budget, so we're requesting that money be moved over to the police department fund.
Okay, so this isn't any additional funding, this is just moving from column A to column B?
Yes.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from the committee on this legislation? About counsel, questions, comments? All right, I move that we forward this ordinance to council for a first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lawson Rowe. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This ordinance will be forwarded to council for a first reading. Third item on the agenda tonight is an ordinance authorizing the city auditor to remove equipment from the city's fixed asset list for the Reynoldsburg Police Department.
This item is a transport vehicle that was replaced through the 2021 vehicle or budget. We finally received that new transport van and was outfitted and placed into service. This is the vehicle that President Pro Tem Baker directed me to get rid of, so we are gonna get rid of that vehicle.
Is it the one you're taking him away in?
Unfortunately, not. So we will place it on govdeals.com and get rid of that vehicle.
All right.
For a note, that paddy wagon looked like it was from Police Academy 2.
It was 15 years old, about 113,000 miles.
Well, I think I saw the new one on the road. Is it black with the blue stripe?
Disguises the Amazon van, is what the evidence says.
Yep, I saw it. Looks good.
Yeah.
All right, do we have any questions or comments from the committee on this legislation? Counsel? I move that we forward this ordinance to council for a first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Packerell. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This ordinance will be forwarded to council for its first reading. As there's no further business before the Public Safety Law and Courts Committee, I return the meeting to you, President Pro Tem. That's you.
It's me. Okay, our next committee is Public Service and Transportation Committee. Councilmember Strickland.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Baker. This is the Public Service and Transportation Committee meeting for July 11, 2022. Members in attendance are Councilmember Cotner, Councilmember Packerell, Councilmember Lawson Rowe, myself, and President Pro Tem Baker. Item number one, an order authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the 2022 water line replacement project and declaring an emergency. Mayor Begney, would you like to speak on this?
Yes, Chair Strickland, members of the committee, members of council, and everyone watching at home. The next four items are very similar. These are our annual water line and sewer line replacements. The water lines that are up to be replaced were listed in your packet. We did get the winning bid just earlier today, and it's Danbert, and that information will be updated before the July 25 meeting. For those that you want to know, the Brookside Park in East Main Street is the first location for the water main replacement, with the base bid of Saratoga Avenue being their water mains replaced, and one alternate, alternate four, which is actually the East Main Street. And I'll kind of get a little bit of descriptive on both of those. When the Water Department is looking for these projects that we are mandated to do yearly, we basically look at which, which areas of town have had the most water breaks in the most concentrated area, and then that's the area that we target. So in this case, Saratoga Avenue was the one that is targeted for replacement, so this will be the full replacement all the way throughout, with the base bid, you know, it's around $600,000 and change. The alternate bid is being brought to you for the East Main Street location because we would like to get ahead of some things. So obviously, this is in our Phase 2 area of East Main improvements, which have not yet begun, but we would coordinate that with our existing Phase 2 projects, so that way we can get these water main, or water line improvements in now, before everything gets paved, and that way we don't have to dig it up, you know, next year. Both of these will help with kind of some, just our water industry all the way throughout, and I stand by for any questions.
Thank you, Mayor Begney. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? From counsel? I move we forward this ordinance to council for a first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lawson Rowe. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This ordinance will be forwarded to council for a first reading. Item number two, an order authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with EMHT for construction inspection services for the 2022 water line replacement project and declaring an emergency. Mayor Begney.
Chair Strickland, again, this is actually to inspect, to make sure that everyone is doing what they need to be doing for the water line project that we just discussed. EMHT will have someone on site to inspect and report back to the city that everything's being done the right way.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? From counsel? I move the, I move we forward this ordinance to council for a first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Packerell. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This ordinance will be forwarded to council for a first reading. Item number three, an order authorizing the mayor to enter into award a contract for 2022 sewer improvement project and declaring an emergency. Mayor Begney.
Chair Strickland, again, kind of repeating the same thing. This one actually is for sewer improvements in the Marbar area. Again, the same thing, the contract, this was the winning bid, and this is the only improvement for this. Same thing, those that have the most urgent need based on experience over the last year or so, determine that this is the best location for it.
Thank you. Any other questions from the counsel? From the committee? All right, I move we forward this ordinance to council for a first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lawson Rowe. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. This ordinance will be forwarded to council for a first reading. Item number four, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the EMHT for construction inspection services for the 2022 sewer improvement project, declaring an emergency. Mayor Begney.
Chair Strickland, again, this would be to provide the services to inspect the sanitary improvement lines in this area.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the committee? From counsel? I move we forward this ordinance to council for a first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Packerell. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I move we forward this ordinance to counsel for a first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by counsel member Packerell. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This ordinance will be forwarded to counsel for a first reading. Item number five, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the state of Ohio for the purpose of acquiring a 0.246 acre sanitary sewer easement on the premises located at 8995 East Main Street, Reynoldsburg, Ohio, appropriating funds and declaring an emergency. Attorney Shook?
Yes, thank you, Chair Strickland. This is an agreement presented to counsel for approval to acquire sanitary sewer easement over at the Department of Agriculture property on East Main Street out in Licking County. The purpose of this acquisition is to be able to provide sufficient sanitary sewer services to expected developments out there on the Licking County side there on the north side of East Main Street. The sanitary sewer line would be constructed in part on the Department of Agriculture property and then extend across Main Street over to provide that service to those expected developments. There is a cost for the acquisition of this easement. It is $3,800 to the state of Ohio, asking that this agreement be forwarded to counsel tonight for a first read and request it to be passed as an emergency.
Thank you, Attorney Shook. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? From counsel? I move we forward this ordinance to counsel for a first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by counsel member Packerell. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This ordinance will be forwarded to counsel for a first reading. Item number six, an orders authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with EMHT for the engineering plans and preparation of bid documents for the 2023 street and sidewalk maintenance and repair program and appropriating funds therefore. Mayor Begney.
Yes, Chair Strickland, members of counsel, this is, as you know, even though we're just now really getting into our 2022 street plan, this allows us to go ahead and start that prep work for the 2023 program, including sidewalk maintenance. This program will allow EMHT to go out into our community and evaluate the roads that have been identified as needing, you know, severe replacement, performing the evaluation on that, as well as identifying those roads in areas where sidewalk maintenance will need to occur in the 2023 road budget. We would like this to be passed, you know, three reads. We'll have more specific information of the total cost. We're still trying to work on a couple of those things as we go through the process, but the idea would be to get this done early so that way we can put it out to bid earlier next year and also to allow that the sidewalks actually be inspected before it snows.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? From counsel? So Mayor, I know that once upon a time we talked about, as we are going through and evaluating which streets we're going to be working on next, now we have our new website. So will that eventually also be published on the website and everything so they allow our residents to know when, you know, to expect?
The light at the end of the tunnel?
Yes.
Yeah, we're actually in the process right now of creating a five-year program that will include everything basically this year, but then for the next five years about the ballpark of what roads will be identified. Again, as I mentioned earlier, road work is kind of a fluid thing. Sometimes things can change the condition of a road. You could have a water main break in an area, and that would completely devastate, you know, some of the roadways. But a general idea that we will update as periodically as we can as we move through the process. So now that, I would say, not the bugs, but now that we're starting to get a lot more familiar with our website and the bells and whistles, you should be seeing that sometime in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you. I move we forward this ordinance to counsel for a first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by counsel member Lawson Rowe. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This ordinance will be forwarded to counsel for a first reading. Item number seven, an orders authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Strausser Paving Company pertaining to the installation of a preemption and interconnect traffic system along East Main Street, appropriating funds therefore, declaring an emergency. Mayor Begney.
Thank you yet again, Chair Strickland. This is for, what we've talked about in the past, is a preemption system for the traffic lights on Main Street from Wagner to Bryce Road, commonly known as the Opticom system. This will allow fire and emergency vehicles to be able to, in essence, flick a switch to get green lighting all the way through so that way they can get from their location to where the emergencies are most active, as well as a interconnect traffic system, which will actually sync all the traffic lights on Main Street from Wagner Road to Bryce Road. So that way we'll provide opportunities for easier traffic flow, less disruption, things of that nature. This is, if approved by counsel, this is hoping to go into place sometime in October, which is when we estimate that the traffic light systems from Jackson and Lancaster and all of those areas where the construction is, is going to be solidified enough to do that, so that way everything can be synced all the way through. So hopefully, again, by October, November, we'll be able to actually have a lot more free-flowing traffic in the area.
Thank you.
And this will actually be paid for with America Recovers Act money from the Biden administration that's going to allow for a lot of infrastructure improvements. So this is not any additional cost out of our current road budget, but it is definitely something that will help the entire community on Main Street.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? From counsel? I move we forward this ordinance to counsel for a first reading. Is there a second?
Get.
Second by counsel member Lawson Rowe. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This ordinance will be forwarded to counsel for a first reading. As there is no further business for the Public Service and Transportation Committee, I return the meeting back to you, President Pro Tem Baker. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel member Strickland. The next committee will be the Finance and Administration Committee member. Counsel member Savadi.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Baker. This is the Finance and Administration Committee meeting for July 11, 2022. Members in attendance are council member Bryant, council member Strickland, myself, and President Pro Tem Baker. First order of business is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding with the Reynoldsburg City School District regarding the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Officer. This ordinance has been brought back to committee to be amended, and I'm hoping Attorney Shook has the details of that amendment.
Yes, thank you, Chair Savadi. Bringing this back to committee for the purpose of amending it to add passage as an emergency. We would like to get this before the school board for approval at their next regularly scheduled meeting on July 19th, so we are asking that you add that emergency language to bypass the 30-day referendum period to give us that ability. That should give us enough time then to post this position and begin searching for a qualified applicant. Thank you.
All right, are there any questions or comments from the committee on this amendment? From the rest of counsel? All right, I move we amend this ordinance to include the emergency language. Do I have a second? Second from counsel member Bryant? All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion carries. The ordinance is amended. I now move we forward this ordinance to counsel for emergency approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by counsel member Bryant. Any final discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the ordinance as amended will be forwarded to counsel for an emergency approval. The second item on the agenda is an ordinance authorizing the increase of appropriations for various city JED agreements and declaring an emergency. And auditor Sishek has joined us.
President Baker, Chair Savadi, this ordinance is administrative in nature. It's requesting additional appropriation for the JED distributions for our tax administrator. The JEDs number one, four, and seven have done better than anticipated, and for me to be able to pay the parties involved, I need your authorization. I'm asking it to be read as a two-read emergency, or two reads and pass as an emergency.
All right, that sounds like kind of a good thing. So is there any questions or comments from the committee? Counsel member Bryant?
I heard the word "better" out of the auditor, so if you could elaborate.
Well, certainly. These are agreements with that in the township form a JED board, and the monies that have been collected aren't from Reynoldsburg Municipal Income Tax. This is JED board money that we administer. So the breakdowns are, the majority of it goes to Southwest Licking School District. The city does make a portion. I have all those breakdowns, but we've been through them since 2018. However, JED 1 did better because our tax administrator has really been looking at things. She's actually been going onsite and...
Is that Lori?
Yeah, Lori Gishel. She's done a wonderful job. The mayor appointed her to the JED board, and we've really done a good job at doing the collections.
What did you anticipate?
The anticipations, these are the additional amounts, so she was off by about $330,000 on JED 1.
That's better.
It is better, and $20,000 on 7 and 270, I'm sorry, on 4, and 270 on JED 7.
Thank you.
Anytime.
All right, any comments from the rest of counsel?
What was those JED numbers again?
The JED 1, 4, and 7.
1, 4, and 7. What's going on with 2, 3, and 5, and 6?
Do you want me to field that?
I would defer to the city attorney to give us a rundown on additional information there. The one thing that we don't want to do, and I don't like talking about, is individual companies. That tax protection, our tax information's protected, so for us to...
I was just wondering, are they doing as good as the others? Not what company's paying in? And I'm just wondering what's going on, like, are they doing as good? We don't know yet, or stuff like that.
JED 3 actually is the Coles facility on State Route 310. It seems to be doing relatively well. I think we anticipated that it would be doing well. JED 2, we are, is not really much off the ground just yet, as there's still proposals in place for developments on the various parcels that are included within JED 2. JED 1 is off the ground because there's a biller and a user that have gotten off the ground, and as we anticipated, but not to the extent that we are receiving. And JED 7 is the FedEx facility over off of Tollgate. JED 7 is performing well, but we are in negotiations with FedEx because they don't want their employees to pay taxes. They would rather pay it themselves, which is very unusual from a company. JED 5 and 6 do not exist.
Oh, God. I just thought this was like, well, 1, 4, 7.
JED 5 and 6 were previously in some manner of negotiation. I would say there is less than a 1% chance that either one actually comes to counsel.
Okay. Thank you.
Excuse me, President Pro Tem Baker. Counsel may not remember, but earlier this year, you passed an appropriation increasing all of the JED's income already, so this is a second one for 1, 4, and 7. So they've done extra better.
Well, and these will continue to come before you because it's not our money. We're administering it, we're collecting it, and then we have to disperse it.
All right, any other discussion? All right, I move we forward this ordinance to counsel for its first read. Do I have a second? Second by counsel member Bryant. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
I now move to forward the ordinance to counsel for its first read. As there's no further business for the Finance and Administration Committee, I return the meeting to President Pro Tem Baker.
Thank you, counsel member Savadi. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a consent agenda for emergency adoption. Items, I'm sorry, items 11, 1 through 10 are part of a consent agenda. These ordinance stands for an emergency adoption. Unless someone wants to remove an item for further discussion, counsel will move forward with an emergency approval.
President Pro Tem, item number five, we'd like, there's been a request to remove that and vote on that separately.
Okay, you said item five?
Correct.
All right. Okay, well, can you read items 1, 2, 3, 4, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10?
Item 1, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with EMHT for engineering services pertaining and bidding for a Black Lake Creek stream restoration and trail improvement project, appropriating funds and declaring an emergency. Item 2, an ordinance authorizing additional funding for the East Main Street Phase 1 Improvement Project, Davidson Drive to Jackson Street, appropriating funds and declaring an emergency. Item 3, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding with the Reynoldsburg City School District regarding the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Officer and declaring an emergency. Item 4, an ordinance adopting the tax budget for the city of Reynoldsburg for the fiscal year beginning 2023 and declaring an emergency. Six, an ordinance providing for the submission to the electorate of the amendment of Section 3.07 of the City of Reynoldsburg Charter and declaring an emergency. Item 7, an ordinance providing for the submission to the electorate of the amendment of sections 4.01, 4.04, 4.05, 4.07, and 4.08 of the City of Reynoldsburg Charter, declaring an emergency. Number 8, an ordinance providing for the submission to the electorate of the amendment of Section 6.06 of the City of Reynoldsburg Charter and declaring an emergency. Number 9, an ordinance providing for the submission of the electorate of the amendment of the Section 7.01 and 4.11, and the repeal of Section 7.02 of the City of Reynoldsburg Charter and declaring an emergency. Item 10, an ordinance providing for the submission to the electorate of the amendment of Section 10.01 of the City of Reynoldsburg Charter and declaring an emergency.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve these ordinance? Motion by Councilwoman Bryant. May I have a second? Counsel member Lawson Rowe, any further, any further discussion? Okay, Clerk Prasher, can you please call the row?
Counsel member Cottner?
Aye.
Counsel member Bryant?
Aye.
Counsel member Strickland?
Aye.
Counsel member Savadi?
Aye.
Counsel member Packerell?
Aye.
Counsel member Lawson Rowe?
Aye.
President Pro Tem Baker?
Aye.
Third, that was 6, 0, 7, 0.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, the item 5, which was pulled aside for a separate vote, Clerk Prasher, can you please read that item?
5, an ordinance providing for the submission of the electorate of the amendment of Section 3.04B of the City of Reynoldsburg Charter and declaring an emergency. And that particular amendment was giving the president the right to vote.
Okay. Is there any discussion regarding this item? Okay, seeing none, may I have a motion to approve this ordinance? So moved by counsel member Bryant. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by counsel member Savadi. Last chance for discussion. Okay, Clerk Prasher, can you please call the row?
Counsel member Cottner?
Aye.
Counsel member Bryant?
Aye.
Counsel member Strickland?
Nay.
Counsel member Savadi?
Aye.
Counsel member Packerell?
Aye.
Counsel member Lawson Rowe?
Aye.
And President Pro Tem Baker?
Aye.
That vote was 5, 7.
Okay.
Oh, 5, 2, I'm sorry. It needed to add up to 7.
Okay, moving on to item 12, the consent agenda for first read. Items, for item 12, items 1 through 10 are part of a consent agenda. These ordinance stand for a first reading unless someone wants to remove these items for further discussion. Counsel will move forward with the first reading. Clerk Prasher, can you read items 1 through 10?
Item 1, an ordinance appropriating funds from the unappropriate IT computer fund to an account in the public, in the police department and declaring an emergency. Two, an ordinance authorizing the city auditor to remove equipment from the city's fixed asset list for the asset list for the Reynoldsburg Police asset list for the asset list for the Reynoldsburg Police Department. Three, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the 2022 water line replacement project and declaring an emergency. Four, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with EMHT for construction inspection services for the 2022 water line replacement project and declaring an emergency. Five, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an award, enter into a contract for the 2022 sewer improvement project and declaring an emergency. Six, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with EMHT for construction inspection services for the 2022 sewer improvement project and declaring an emergency. Item seven, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the state of Ohio for the purchase of acquiring, for the purpose of acquiring 0.246 acre sanitary sewer easement on the premises located at 8995 East Main Street, Reynoldsburg, Ohio, appropriating funds and declaring an emergency. Eight, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with EMHT for the engineering plans and preparation of bid documents for the 2023 straight and sidewalk maintenance and repair program and appropriating funds therefore. Eight, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Strauser Paving pertaining to the installation of a preemptive interconnect traffic system along East Main Street, appropriating funds therefore and declaring an emergency. Ten, an ordinance authorizing the increase of appropriations for various city JED agreements and declaring an emergency.
Okay. These ordinance will stand for a first reading. Next item on agenda, consent agenda for second reading. Items 13, items 1 through 5 are part of a consent agenda. These ordinance stands for a second reading unless someone wants to remove these items for further discussion. Council will move forward with a second reading. Clark Pasher, can you please read items 1 through 5?
Item one, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Public Works Commission, OPWCC, Clean Ohio Green Space Conservation Program for Blacklick Stream Restoration and Repairing Corridor Enhancement and Appropriating Funds. Two, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept a grant and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, ODNR, for the Blacklick Creek Trail Improvement and Appropriating Funds. Three, an ordinance appropriating funds from the Unappropriated General Fund to various accounts in the Parks and Recreation Department. Item four, an ordinance to amend Chapter 160, Sections 160.02, authorized positions, personnel, classification, and pay grade F, Police Department. Section 1.02G2, Service Department, Building Division. And Section 1.0.03F, Other, for the city of Reynoldsburg, Ohio, declaring an emergency. Five, an ordinance to repeal and replace Chapter 105, wards and boundaries of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Reynoldsburg, Ohio.
Okay, thank you. These ordinance will stand for a second reading. Now we're on to other council matters. Does anyone on council have any further items they would like to discuss or bring up? Okay, seeing none. You know what? Since I wasn't here for the last council meeting, I want to continue to thank doctors, doctors, nurses, teachers, sorry, your summer break's almost over, and those who work in the retail as we still going through a pandemic. With that being said, upcoming meetings, there is a scheduled upcoming council BZBA and a planning commission meeting. The next scheduled council meeting is July 25, 2022. Now we'll move on to executive session. Council will be going into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 121- yeah, dash 22G4, to conference with the attorney reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning compensation and other terms and conditions of employment. Council chambers will need to be cleared of, for the session, the following, following the session, council will not vote to have any further discussion. May I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
So moved by Councilmember Pacarrel. May I have a second? Second by Councilmember Pac, Councilmember Bryant? How am I screwing that up? Clark Pasher, would you please call the row?
Councilmember Cotner?
Aye.
Councilmember Bryant?
Aye.
Councilmember Strickland?
Aye.
Councilmember Savadi?
Aye.
Councilmember Pacarrel?
Aye.
Councilmember Lawson Row?
Aye.
And President Pro Tem Baker?
Aye.
That's seven zero.
Okay. Council would like to invite Mayor Begney, Attorney Shook, Auditor Sizak, Chief Baker, and Clark Pasher to remain. Everybody else? You ain't got to go home, but you can't stand here.
Okay.